Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session day 23-023. Please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Ms. Sodles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of peace, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. Inspire us with your spirit of wisdom and grant us with willingness to work together, setting aside any bias for truth. Lord, we honor and remember the precious lives lost and those whose lives were forever changed on September 11th, 2001. Help us mourn alongside them with a constant compassion that can only be rooted in you. We give thanks for your presence in our time of need and ask that you unify us in your Holy Spirit. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Counsel, if I may, I'd just like to remind everyone that Councilman Bennett obviously is not with us this evening. He's a little under the weather, but he is tuning in at home. So we wish him the best and speedy recovery with whatever he's got going on. Agenda number four, presentation proclamations. Whiteford Volunteer Fire Company firefighter one class, Ms. Thomas, in the audience, come forward. Councilman Riley.
Gentlemen.
Counselor.
So folks, just want to let you know that... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. My paper, now you turn this thing on.
It's on.
It's on? Okay. There we go. All right, folks, I just want to let you know that while COVID was going on and all the things that shut us down as a community, Victoria Thomas and five of her colleagues, who we already recognized at the Whiteford Volunteer Fire Department, they actually completed their firefighter one course. And so I wanted to recognize her tonight, not only to represent herself, but also all the volunteers here in Harford County in the fire department. So Victoria, on behalf of myself and all my colleagues, and also on behalf of the General Assembly, my wife also has one here for you, we want to thank you for your volunteer service and what you do and what you're going to continue to do for our community. So thank you so much. Victoria, I'm going to ask everybody wanted to congratulate you, so if you could just go down there and shake their hands, they would appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All righty.
Can I get a photo real quick?
Sure.
Get rid of the microphone.
Can I actually have Mr. Riley? Can I move this way a little bit, please? Okay, perfect. And a little bit more, Mr. Riley. There you go. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Agenda number seven, approval of minutes, legislative day 23-022, September 5th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Mr. Jantridana, please read Resolution 036-23 and 0...
Mr. President, we have five and six.
Yeah. Oh. I'm trying to speed along. They're already short meeting.
I'm not complaining.
What's in that coffee cup?
Water. Agenda number five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. We have none this evening. And special presentations, Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway. Bridget, I apologize. How could I ever forget you? Please come forward.
I was trying to rock and roll, man.
Wait a minute. I'm not there. Not offended, am I on?
I hope so.
Not offended in the least, and I'm just privileged to be here to be able to present to you a little bit about the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway. I know I gave you a robust PowerPoint that I also have here, but I promise you, because it's a quick meeting, that we're just going to hit a few slides, I just wanted to make sure that I was able to give you all the information that I could. I could give you 150 more slides, but, you know, I stopped at 46. But I just wanted you to be able to ask me questions going forward in the future, so just...
Pull your mic a little closer to you. Your microphone a little closer to you, Bridget. There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so I am with the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway, and we are an organization that was formed in 1992. We were formed by Harford County, Cecil County, Havertagh Grace, Perryville, Port Deposit, to create this 38-mile greenway trail system to promote economic development, community revitalization along the Susquehanna. In 1997, we became a 501(c)(3), and we then, in 2000, partnered with the state. We are still nonprofit, but we partner with the state so that we can bring special state funds to this area, and in particular, to preserve, promote, and interpret the historical, cultural, natural resources in the area. Again, we encourage regional economic development. We support public recreation efforts, particularly trail development. That's the spine of what we do. We connect the cultural heritage, recreational, and natural resources in the area, again, just to promote economic development in that region. And there are 13 of us. There are 13 heritage areas. We, again, are a nonprofit, but we partner with the state in this system that's called heritage areas, and this is how we fit in. This is our boundary that was created, again, by the counties and municipalities. And if a project is located within this boundary, that means they are eligible for these special state funds, so it's a Maryland incentive zone. We are also the management entity for the Lower Susquehanna Scenic Byway, which is the road, basically the road portion of the heritage area. It's to bring folks off of 95, off of Route 1, to the roads less traveled. And here is a sampling of what we do. We assist with funding. We do trail development, conservation, stewardship, and again, I mentioned tourism support, planning, advocacy, partnership building, marketing, regional identity, and public art support. Move along. For instance, this is how we've been able to help Harford County in the last five years, four, five years. We've been able to allow our partners access to 41 grants through the Maryland Heritage Area Authority, which, again, I mentioned, was the Maryland Incentive Zone program. The grants totaled 1.6 million, and the grants are one-to-one match, and then with over project cost, it's 4.9 roughly that we've been able to account for in project cost. We also are enabled by the state to grant mini-grants, and in these years, we were able to award 16 mini-grants to our local partners and for projects such as our small museums, interpretation, et cetera, and almost $80,000 and almost $200,000 in total project cost. Through the course of our organization's history, and this doesn't just include the Maryland Heritage Area grants, this is all the grants that we've been able to help our partners secure, 124 grants, $14.5 million in grants, project cost of, you know, almost $29 million. And then here's the history of our mini-grants. And then here are some of the great projects and partners that we work with in terms of getting funding for them. So Stepping Stone, The Lock House, the Havertagh Grace Maritime Museum, Susquehanna Wildlife Society. There is almost you name, you name them, we help them. And if they haven't been awarded funding to date, we are always reaching out. We send out a broad solicitation to help folks know about our program so that they can find funding. And again, the core for this funding is heritage tourism, economic development through heritage tourism. For instance, Concorde Point Lighthouse, over the history of our program, we've been able to help them get eight grants for, you know, replacing windows, cleaning the lighthouse, helping with the keeper's house and the outside grounds, et cetera. Interpretation inside as well for children and adults alike. An especially exciting project that we were recently involved in, and this is how we can help, this is how projects are built upon what we can help as a foundation. So in '21, we were able to help the Rock Run Grist Mill, DNR, get $81,000 to basically put Band-Aids on the grist mill, just to keep it going. There was, it's in need of great repair, and now it has gotten recognition from Preservation Maryland, and they were able to apply for National Park Service 250 anniversary funding to get $747,000 to do all of the work that needs to bring back the grist mill at Susquehanna State Park to what it needs to be, so that it's not just a ruin. And as I say, I think it's one of our most iconic structures in the heritage area, maybe tied with the lighthouse, it's arguable, but this is such a unique gem to our heritage area, and we're just so pleased to be able to partner with the Preservation Maryland National Park Service and just bring recognition to the need for this 1797 mill so that it just doesn't go to ruin. A big part of what we do is trails, and I've given you some information, and I have information for other folks, and I can publish this. You can also find it on our website, so I won't go into a lot of detail about the exact trail alignment, but it's 38-mile trail connecting, as I said, Havertagh Grace, Perryville, Port Deposit, Conawingo, Darlington, with the point being to connect our resources and make it an economic driver for the region. And this is how we connect up also to Pennsylvania and some of the other partners that we work We are one of the few nonprofits that have a state-commissioned economic impact report showing the value that the heritage area brings to our counties. I wish this was our bank account. It's not, but it does show the investment that the benefit of the investments that the counties make and the municipalities make in our organization. This is our trail map that Harford County helped us develop. It's just a working trail map to identify what we need to work on, what's here, what's missing, just helping us work through that. One of our most recent successes is the Vulcan Quarry Trail. We were just able to open a 1.1-mile trail around the quarry. This was a project probably 20 years in the making. Vulcan has always been a great partner with us, and now we were able to, in conjunction with Mason-Dixon Trail System and a lot of other partners, put a trail system through the quarry edge. And so now you can walk, if you choose, from 95, Lapidum Road at 95, all the way down through Havertagh Grace and beyond. There is one steep cliff that we're working with Vulcan on, making it a little bit easier to get through, but we continue to work with all of our trail partners to complete this trail. Oh, sorry. For instance, Joe Kay Trail, we're working now with connecting up the city to Swan Harbor Farm, and then Bellevue, of course. And now we're also working, we're really working hard to connect Conawingo Dam to Lapidum Landing. If you're not familiar with that, if you've never been to Susquehanna State Park, I encourage you to go visit. The trail from the Conawingo Dam down to Stafford Furnace is wonderful and fabulous and lovely, and you can take kids there, you can ride bikes. The next segment to the Deer Creek Trestle Bridge is an amazing meandering path along the river that Mason-Dixon Trail built, again, in conjunction with DNR. And then we are working on getting the segment built from the grist mill, which I showed you before, all the way down to Lapidum Landing. We have a friends group that was just formed. We are, we have lots of national trail partners, as I mentioned before, because we are in areas, as we all know, steeped in history, and now, in probably the last decade, maybe the last 15 years, we have really become recognized as this area that is, has such great historical value, especially because you have to cross the river, and we always have had to cross the river, and one of the best places to cross the river, especially between Philadelphia and Washington, is the Susquehanna or the Upper Bay area. So we're a gateway to some national trails. This was our initial plan. It's always been a plan that has two crossings. It was always meant to be a loop trail system, a crossing between Susquehanna State Park and Port Deposit, and then also a crossing between Havertagh Grace and Perryville, which there was a crossing back in the early 1900s, late 1800s, and we're trying to revive that because we think this would be a supreme economic driver, multi-night stays, it'd just really attract a lot of visitors, and also just be a really exceptional local amenity. Again, some of our trail partners, as I mentioned before, and this is how we all align, and this is what we're working on now, is actually getting that river crossing restored. We are working on, as you all know, I'm sure, an Amtrak crossing between Havertagh Grace and Perryville, and as I mentioned before, there was a crossing before, and now Amtrak is building the double track through Havertagh Grace. It is going to, you know, make a difference in the city, and we think, wow, now might be the time to provide that pedestrian bike crossing again. We do have a little bit of bike availability crossing on Haydom, but even the most experienced cyclists say they wouldn't do it because it's perilous. So we also just host some conservation stewardship efforts. That's part of our mission. We do river sweep. It's in our 23rd year. We've removed tons and tons of debris, you name it, we have found it along the shoreline, and that is based, and just to the effort of all of our volunteers that have continuously volunteered over the years, and our other partners that have helped us. We do National Trails Day, just some of the things we find, bikes, toilets, refrigerators, propane tanks. Like I said, yeah, there's... I can't get forward. But I'm sure you guys have heard enough. Oh, there. Thanks. I guess, oh, you know what? It's probably just taken a while because it's photos. Apologies. You'll see that we clean Garrett Island, so we clean the shoreline on both counties, including Garrett Island, and do it in whatever manner we can. We do the National Trails Day. We also are involved in land conservation, partner with folks like Harford Land Trust, et cetera, in any way we can. We also do the heritage cultural recreation, environmental tourism, so we were able to, we're privileged to be able to host the Pride of Baltimore and the Maryland Dove. We help them get funding to come here, and then it's soup to nuts. We help them in every step of the way we promote their visit. I was privileged to be able to take the Maryland Dove captain and cook to the Wise Grocery Store because I was so interested in what they buy to feed the crew. So you'll see some of the visitation numbers there, just from, this was June alone, we had both of these visits. And then we also are involved in planning efforts, in particular for our partners, to make sure they're included and that the plans are up to date and reflect what the goals are. It's always partner-driven, hence partner advocacy efforts. We speak to state, national partners. We do exhibits at MML, Mako, et cetera, just to let folks know that this is an important region. We do important things here, and it's worth financial investment and recognition. This is just a little blurb. There's us with Senator Cardin. We went to DC and met with him, and that's our trail marker that he's holding. I know it's minute, but these are our friends group, created trail markers, they're putting them out, and Senator Cardin, of course, is a huge trail fan, and we've been talking with him about the river crossing, and he's been a big support. You know, we're always reaching out to the governors. We've always gotten across-the-board support from our elected officials. And of course, we do partnership building locally. For instance, tomorrow, we have a regional greenway meeting that we invite all of, anybody and everybody that wants to come, and primarily, the focus of the meeting is just so partners can share what they're doing. So if someone is working on an underground railroad project, they might be able to offer support to somebody else that's just starting an underground railroad project, and we've just seen such great benefit from that cross-communication. We also just help with regional identity. So National Park Service might come to us and say, like, where do we need to put signage? Or can you connect me with partners about signage? And we help them with that. We also help with public art. That's also part of what we do. And that's basically it in a nutshell. So again, happy to answer any questions, happy to provide any further information. I left you with a couple of trail guides and my contact information. Happy to help in any way we can. We are here to serve the counties. We're here to serve our partners in any way we can. And as I, I think I spoke to Councilman Guthrie at Mako and said, we are, just because our boundary, is how I described it, doesn't mean we can't help outside of our boundaries. I cannot necessarily support MHA funding, but I have a lot of partners, and we have a lot of information, a lot of connections. That's what we are. We're partner builders and connectors, so happy to provide any trail information or anything that we've learned.
So Bridget, let me express my appreciation and congratulations to you for the job that you've done since you've stepped up to the director's position, right? And all the work that you did prior to that for the years that you've been there. Growing up in Havertagh Grace, I'm very familiar with the train tracks that follow all the way up the river to the dam, and when I was a kid, they were still being used, but obviously since Agnes in '72, they were wiped out in many places. And I noticed your trails around Vulcan and some of the other places are taking advantage of that railway bed, right?
Yes. So we have a really big push. We just actually met with Vulcan today with Paul Magnus, Director of Parks and Rec, in Vulcan, to see how we can at least get the portion, the rail portion, from Conawingo Dam down at least to Lapidum on the rail bed. What will that take? We know it's already established from Conawingo Dam down to Stafford Road.
Yes.
And then from Stafford Road to Deer Creek Trestle Bridge, Mason-Dixon forged a path through, which is beautiful and lovely, but it's not on the rail bed, but it meets the, it starts to, it meets back onto the rail bed at the Trestle Bridge and goes to the grist mill, and then from the grist mill to Lapidum Landing, and I apologize, I know you probably have to look at maps to understand this, but that is an unmaintained trail. That doesn't mean folks don't use it. I have lots of photos to show. Folks use it, but we need to allow them to have safe passage so that they're not walking on Stafford Road. If any of you are familiar with Stafford Road, it's a single lane, it's a two-lane road, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're working on getting that established.
About a lane and a half.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly. You have to know where to pull off, but not too far. And then we're working with DNR to get the trail built up to 95 to connect with Vulcan.
So Counsel, questions, comments? Anyone? All right. Well, thank you again, Bridget.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. My privilege.
My apologies again for skipping over you.
Oh, I would've stayed here all night. It's fine.
All right. Agenda item seven, approval of minutes, legislative day 23-022, September 5th, 2023. Again, are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Mr. Vice President, please read Resolution 036-23 and 37-23 into the record, please.
Resolution 036-23, Historic Landmark, Friendship Farm, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. The resolution designating Friendship Farm, also known as Dever's Compulsion and Friendships Benefit, consisting of 18.4 acres located at 834...
That's 04, sir.
18.04 acres located at 834 Federal Hill Road and Street Maryland, together with its buildings, environmental settings, and...
Appartements.
Appartements, as a Harford County historic landmark in accordance with Chapter 267 of the Harford County Code. No public hearing required.
Let me just stop you right there. Mr. Benson, would you like to come forward, please?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening, Council President Vincenti and members of the council. My name is Jacob Benson. I am the Historic Preservation Planner for Harford County. I am pleased to be with you, be before you tonight with Resolution 036-23 for the designation of Friendship Farm as a Harford County Historic Landmark. The Harford County Historic Landmarks and Districts Program is one of the ways that we support the owners of historic properties in Harford County. Owners of designated properties receive access to the county's historic preservation tax credit and expert guidance from the staff and members of the county's Historic Preservation At their June 7th, 2023, public meeting, the Harford County Historic Preservation Commission recommended Friendship Farm located at 834 Federal Hill Road and Street for designation as a Harford County Historic Landmark. It is nominated by its owners, Mr. Francis B. and Mrs. Patricia C. Smith. It is identified as a historic site by the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties Number HA-2296. The proposed landmark boundary, shown in red on the map on the slide, consists of approximately 18.04 acres and is confined to the current property tax parcel. The property includes a farmstead consisting of a historic farmhouse and 20th-century outbuildings surrounded by open pastures. The photograph in the upper left of the slide shows the historic farmhouse and its three, possibly four, eras of construction. Part of the significance of the property is this evolution in vernacular construction and what we can learn about changes in construction materials and techniques over time. The bottom-left photo shows the pastures surrounding the farmstead. These photographs are a sample of the artifacts that the owners have found on the property and illustrate the property's significance as a source of new information on life in Harford County over the past 200 years. The photo in the upper-left is a colonial or early federal-era British artilleryman's uniform button. The photo to its right shows two different types of nails found in the house, showing the changes in construction techniques as the house was renovated and expanded. The photo to the bottom-left shows what is possibly one of the oldest sections of the house, where the owners have replaced an interior wall with plexiglass to showcase the wood peg framing technique used in that section of the home. The bottom-right photo shows a variety of medicinal bottles uncoffered on the property, which tell us more about life for the previous occupants. Thank you for your time this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, in one part of the document that we have here says it may even go back to 1700. Is that correct?
That is a possibility, yes. More research is needed into the history, the exact history of the farm. Actually, I received more information from the property owners this evening, dating it back further, so there is a lot still to be learned about this property.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Benson, while he's here? All right. Thank you. We'll take this up at a future meeting.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jantridana?
Resolution 037-23, Master Water and Sewer Plan Update, Fall 2023, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, a resolution providing for the adoption of the master water and sewer plan in Fall 2023 update, a copy of which is attached here, too, and for submission of the plan to the Maryland Department of the Environment for its approval and implementation pursuant to Title IX of the Environment Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:45 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Agenda number nine, introduction of bills. Council President, please read Bill 23-029 into the record.
Bill 23-029, Tax Credit Nonprofit Swim Clubs, introduced by Council Members Penman, Guthrie, Boyle, Sodles, Riley, and Council President Vincenti. An act to add, an act to add new Section 123-46.6, tax credit nonprofit swim clubs to Article II, real property tax credits of Chapter 123 Finance and Taxation of the Harford County Code as amended to establish a real property tax credit for eligible nonprofit swim clubs... Code, as amended, to establish a real property tax credit for eligible nonprofit swim clubs to provide for the amount of the real property tax credit, to provide the process by which an eligible nonprofit swim club may receive a real property tax credit, and generally relating to real property tax credits. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 10, 2023, at 6:45 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. 11, call for final reading of bills. We have none. Enrollment of bills, we have none. 13, unfinished business, we have none. 14, new business, we have none. We're going to go to 17, comments from attending citizens.
I do need to check.
Take your time. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Again, three minutes for her speaker. Call your first speaker.
Katie Gonano, followed by Lauren Heiser.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, thanks for having me again. It's Lauren Heiser. It's 2087 Stewart Drive in Fawston. It's 21047. So I came to talk today because we've pleasantly made some headway in the Fawston apartment project. Councilwoman Penman, I'm sure having the developer's ear helped. As a representative, I still maintain that you heard our concerns over email, phone calls, and at the community input meeting. And I still feel that the correct play would have been to advise the constituents on zoning code, the development process, and all of the areas that the project was lacking, to assure us that it was within your power to introduce legislation to protect our community, amend zoning code, and even fund future schools through impact fees. But instead, we were told that it was a done deal, that you didn't see anything in the plans that could negatively affect the approval, and that you were advocating for the owner of the property and his property rights because he made an expensive business purchase. But we did. We educated ourselves. So now, as a happy result, there's an army of people in District B that are educated on local zoning code, impact fees, school capacity and forecasting issues, upzoning, the development envelope, wetlands, rainbow trout, adequate public facilities ordinances, the county's master plan, failing intersections, traffic counts, NRD setbacks, and the amount of parking spaces required per apartment unit. Now we begin review of the Harford County Charter and the section on qualification of council members. We've read meeting minutes and Development Advisory Committee meeting notes going back years. We picked up on other things that are lacking, not quite right, and downright shady. So we've made some headway on the Fawston apartment project. But now, like I said, we've noticed other things, things that aren't quite right and legislation that we feel needs to be revisited. We stand with Perryman. We don't think it's acceptable to say that you appreciate us coming out, but that Perryman's been here for a year and a half. That's shameful. That's a year and a half of people taking off work, arranging for childcare, to come here and ask for help. We didn't appreciate an update on your meeting with the Board of Education and the county executive to discuss school forecasting and the potential modification of the adequate public facilities ordinance. This could protect our students and our schools. And Councilwoman Guthrie, I appreciate your comments at the end of the last meeting. It was refreshing to feel heard on that issue about the adequate public facilities ordinance. We would also like an update on the much-needed deep dive into school forecasting and the omission of B3-zoned property from those figures. And finally, last week, I spoke about a major oversight when it came to impact fees, how they've not been updated or adjusted for inflation since 2004 when they were adopted. I'd love to hear where we're at with the bill to correct that. If it was worthy of emergency legislation to rule those impact fees back in the past so as not to put a financial strain on developers, it seems worthy of emergency legislation to correct that now, especially with massive apartment and housing projects on the horizon in our county.
Ms. Heiser, please bring your comments to a close.
Okay. I'm tired of this, and I don't really want to be here.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Heiser, before you go, I just want to comment. I did receive your email. We are going to set up a meeting in reference to the APF questions. And I will give an update from the meeting at the end of this meeting. Yes. Next speaker.
Kate Pervilsky, followed by Josh Kozel.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Name and address.
Kate Pervilsky. I live at 2217 Edinburgh Drive in Fawston, hence the orange shirt. Everyone talks about how the environment is so important and wants to protect it, but it seems large projects and overdevelopment continue to move forward unchecked. We can never go back once we destroy the forest and rivers and pave over every inch of our wooded areas. Recently, I wrote a letter to Angel Valdez. She is the Anti-Degregation Implementation Coordinator for the Water and Science Administration at the Maryland Department of Environment. I requested information regarding the property located at 317 Mountain Road, and she responded with the following, and I quote, "I'm responsible for implementing the Tier Two High Quality Waters Review for projects. More information regarding Maryland's Tier Two High Quality Waters can be found on the agency webpage. After checking the Tier Two online map, the address provided is located within the Tier Two watershed of Little Gunpowder Falls Four, which has no assimilative capacity. This means that data has shown that the Tier Two stream has degraded below Tier Two standards. If the project will require, will require a state approval, permit, or authorization, it will also need to undergo Tier Two review. As part of the review, the applicant may have to provide a Tier Two report, including social and economic justification, if the applicant cannot fully mitigate impacts. I won't know what those impacts are until someone applies for the state authorization, approval, or permit," end quote. I did a little research on Tier Two waters, because I didn't know anything about them, and I found out this information, that currently 44% of all Tier Two streams have no assimilative capacity. Worth noting is that even if a Tier Two water is degraded below the assimilative capacity threshold, the water is still designated as Tier Two. Having no capacity means that there are additional steps required in a Tier Two review. The purpose of the Tier Two Anti-Degregation Review is to prevent further degradation to high-quality waters as a result of permitted activities. And if there is no assimilative capacity in Tier Two water, the Maryland Department of Environment has determined that this stream has degraded below Tier Two standards, then a more substantial justification for remaining impacts is required before the Tier Two review is satisfied. And it's the process determining, determining assimilative capacity can be found at the Comor Regulations 26080204-1, and they state as follows, "Waters of this state shall be protected and maintained for existing uses and the basic uses of water contact recreation, fishing, protection of aquatic wildlife, and agricultural, et cetera." So I ask you to please take the environment into consideration before any project in Harford County moves forward. If you live in and love Harford County, and I think we all do, then please stop allowing it to be overdeveloped. We can stop overdevelopment together and preserve Harford County for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Josh Kozel, 1106 Emerald Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, 21047. Wanted to talk tonight on a topic that was brought up during the comments by the council, and that was by you, Mr. Penman, at 315 and 317 Mountain Road. I'm glad that we're meeting with the community. I know some of the people that are in this group, strong people. What I'm concerned about is the topic of what else can be built here? You know, what is the alternative? What's the alternatives? I saw something in one of your campaign literatures that you sent out. I think you grabbed it off another sign from another candidate, though, but it said, "Protect and preserve the community." Finding alternatives is not trying to protect and preserve the community, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'd like to bring up a couple of things. Inside the county code, 267-74, subsection 3, Design, the proposed project shall be designed with buildings which are compatible and harmonious with surrounding uses. How does a parking garage with an apartment on top fit into the Fawston area as compatible and harmonious with surrounding buildings and surrounding uses? Looking at it from the State Highway Administration and traffic lens, a full deceler and acceleration lanes are needed on 152 for this entrance and exit. Speed limits on 152 warrant a 630-foot deceleration lane. What are the conditions of the culvert pipe under 152? Planning a left hand, or planning a left-hand turn out of the property on 152 to head south is a nightmare and a huge safety concern. This would also mean that all Fawston Village shoppers could use the apartment exit to make a left turn on 152, which currently they can't do. So the number of people coming out on 152 in traffic, in the traffic study, is not just apartment people, but also shopping center people that want to head onto a south on 152. The site distance, there's an issue with that from the proposed apartment exit due to the elevation change at the allocation. Looking at it from a soil conservation district and environmental issues, some great things were just brought up this evening, but there is no wetlands border in the plans. Grading into the natural resource development, it's about 40 to 75 feet, and encroachment on the NRD is throughout. Grading from stormwater management ponds goes right to the edge of the stream. The design shows grading beyond their tree clearing line. By moving the storm drain from others into the NRD, I question, why is it even getting moved? Most likely because of the future parking lot and pervious pavement that they're planning for. The tenant outdoor activity area, or the active space requirement, they are using every inch from the apartment entrance sidewalk to the side of each building up to the front of the line of the apartment building to meet this requirement. Would it really going, to go between two four-story apartment buildings that are 80 feet off of 152? Also, with the added trees and bushes, this space is actually smaller and looks to fall short of the .104 acre needed by almost half. I'm going to skip over this Tier Two review. Did such a great job, thank you. But here's the proof, right off of the map. It shows it right in the Tier Two zone with assimilative capacity remaining, no.
Mr. Kozel, please bring your comments to a close.
See you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Sadowski, followed by William Martino.
Hello. Diana Sadowski, 1113 Stromco Drive, Fawston, Maryland. The obvious overdevelopment here in Harford County transcends political party lines. It's one driven by human greed. The bottom line is, we, the citizens of Harford County, want a peaceful, peace-filled existence in our communities. Harford County's rural nature translates to want of peace. However, due to unchecked overdevelopment, it's turned many areas into a giant mess. Once peaceful and peace-filled areas are now stressful and stress-filled. Quality of life is being sacrificed for the almighty dollar that fills the pockets of developers and their supporters. They're a self-serving bunch who pretend to help the community, however destruction of the community is more like it. How many car washes, nail salons, restaurants, and retail spaces are needed? All the while, many spaces remain vacant, becoming an eyesore to communities that they're in. How many more are necessary before we all say enough? It's becoming a battle between us and them. Yes, I and others will stand here and talk about the negative impact of overdevelopment that's having on our county. Increased crime, traffic, overcrowding schools, overstretched emergency services and hospitals, destruction of waterways and our natural environment. Guess what? Each one of you, working with us in the community, have the ability to turn this negativity around. Contrary to what my District B representative says, it is possible to build true urban sprawl here in Harford County. In my heart, sir, you and others on the council are part of the problem. Overdevelopment is not improving our quality of life. Will you acknowledge that overdevelopment has gotten out of control? Will you acknowledge that building, a building moratorium may be necessary? I won't be getting the answers from developers because the increase in brick and mortar relates to cash in their pockets and the pockets of their supporters. Think about these questions. Perhaps you can address them later this evening. I've said before that not every plot of grass must be occupied by brick and mortar. Mr. Penman, now that you're back with the Sheriff's Department, how many work hours will be devoted to fighting crime? How many hours will be devoted to your constituent concerns? How many hours will be devoted to developers and other special interest groups that you're involved in? Looks like time management is going to be an obvious priority for you. I see much conflict of interest because of your ties with the Sheriff's Department and with developers, and perhaps recusals may be in the future, too. Now, Mr. Vincenti, last week, you said this was the people's chambers, and I appreciate being able to stand here and talk to you. But also, last week, you were rather terse with a young man who was asking questions regarding council members. Do you remember that?
I do.
You also indicated that you would not entertain innuendo or rumor. Well, that rumor came true yesterday.
But it wasn't that night, ma'am.
The credibility of this council has been tarnished. I think that you owe that young man an apology.
I've already talked to that young man.
Okay, good. Because of your lack of transparency and secrecy, I, and I can't speak for everyone else in this room, but I can't look at this council in the same way. Further sadness for our county. I hope you can make this right in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
William Martino, 1207 Teeford Road, Forest Hill. I've been adopted by Fawston. My family moved to Harford County in 1981 from New Jersey. Compared to New Jersey, 1980s Harford County seemed like paradise. The crown jewel within this paradise at that time was the Fawston area. I grew up in the Bell Area, but dreamed to earn enough money to live in the Fawston region. That was the best place to live. I can recall President Reagan coming to Fawston High School in 1986. Yes, all the good stuff was happening there. Well, I could never afford to live in Fawston. Although my address isn't in Forest Hill, it is really more in Jarrettsville. My child and grandchildren lived in Fawston. I was so happy for them to be able to acquire a home there years ago. About three times a week, my wife and I would provide care for our grandchildren, who are not old enough to attend school yet. Early in the morning, we pick up the grandkids at their home, which is on a side street off of 152. And I wait, and I wait, and I wait to make a right turn on the mountain road. And I stop light after light after light as I journey down 152 heading northwest. And I have to wait while 100 buses and 1,000 parents drop off their children jamming up the road in front of Youth Benefit Elementary School. Meanwhile, it's been a significant time later, and the grandkids are chanting, "Are we there yet, Pa?" At this point, I can't wait to get out of Fawston. I no longer dream to live there anymore, and I'm happy to be in Jarrettsville. The county council has ruined the most beautiful part of the county by catering to their developer friends and their lawyers like Joe Snee, the same Joe Snee who was the campaign manager for Aaron Penman. Talk about a conflict of interest. Over the years, the Harford County Council has taken grants, or should I say bribes, from higher magistrates to zone properties around the county for high-density housing and HUD housing. The council president seems to have a policy to accept all grants, no matter the consequences. I'm sure the next area for team overdevelopment will target District D. There will be nowhere left in Harford County to live a royal life. The county has seen to that. The voters of Harford County need to be aware of the builder's connections to the council members and vote them out. I hope and pray that I witnessed, what I witnessed at the Chenowar Center a few Fridays ago is the great awakening of Harford County. Start respecting the citizens. Start respecting the citizens of this county more than your developer buddies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin Hudson, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening. Kevin Hudson, 3200 Cedar Lane, Jarrettsville. And just wanted to add a couple of quick questions. Well, one comment, one question. So this is my, sorry, this is my first meeting ever at a city council. So I moved here in 2019. I retired from the Marine Corps in North Carolina. The schools were terrible. They were like in the top 10 of the U.S. So I was like, okay, I've got a year. We're going to find somewhere. I've got three kids. Right now, one's in 11th grade, one's in the ninth grade, and one attends Jarrettsville Elementary in the fourth grade. So I was like, we've got to get out of here because the schools are terrible. We picked Harford County for the schools and the community. Moved here, couldn't believe it when we walked into Fallston High, or Fallston Junior. I was like, this is amazing. The people are great, the community's great, and I don't know if, you know, I was told by my wife, that's why I'm here, that apparently all the Section 8 housing is going up, and they're busing people or they're moving people here from there. So I see you shaking your head, and I say that to say this. Is there a meeting that goes on or like an update website that every, it's updated like weekly? So, okay, this is what's going on right now. This is where we're at. This is how we got here. For example, in Fallston High School, they've got it mounted, there's a code on there for how many people can be in that room, fire code, right? So if you have all these people coming in, either the rooms have to get bigger or something has to happen. So like when I've done, I've done big projects before, and you have a huge milestone tracker, and you say, okay, hey, today, we're going to go over the last two weeks, and all the requirements for electrical is met, and all the requirements for space for the code for the fire department's met. For example, if we have a ton of influx for students, do we have enough stuff to, you know, all the equipment to cook for the meals? Do we have the security there? Do we have the, you know, the buses, all that stuff, the bandwidth for all that stuff? Is there a meeting every week or two weeks or an update meeting so we can go and say, hey, are you thinking about this? What are we going to do about this? And so...
If you give your contact information to Ms. Dixon before you leave tonight, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. Chapter 4, When the Code Cannot Be Avoided, Don't Answer. On 19 March 2018, I requested a final determination from the Department of Planning and Zoning on whether the activities or uses at the Harford County Airport are a permitted use or illegal non-conforming use. On 3 May 2018, Mr. Killian, then Director of Planning and Zoning, responded that. Operation of the Harford County Airport precedes the adoption of code, and as such, it is recognized as an existing legal non-conforming use on the property. And accordingly, the use is not subject to a request for written determination. This letter shall not act as such, and it is not subject to appeal. I did attempt to appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals anyway. I followed the process prescribed for filing an appeal to the board. The county planning and zoning department rejected my application, so I attempted to file directly to the board. The council's attorney sent back a polite reply. I spoke with the county law department, and they indicated that they will not change the position that you cannot file a zoning appeal case in this matter. On 17 May 2018, I sent an email to then sitting council president and the sitting councilman for District E, Mr. Vincenti, with my concerns regarding both the situation at the airport, the actions of both the county administration and the council attorney. I got no response. I then petitioned the Circuit Court of Harford County for a review of the Department of Planning and Zoning decisions or in the alternative, a writ of mandamus. Harford County Law Department and the Airport Owners Group through council, motion for dismissal and sanctions. In a joint filing by the Harford County Law Department and the Airport Owners Group through council, the zoning status was clarified. Respondents have been operating pursuant to the special exception since that status was conferred and established by the Board of Appeals on Case 5814. And in court, the council for the Airport Owners Group stated that the airport used to be operated as a non-conforming use and is now a conforming use by approved special exception. I wonder, did council for the airport establish the basis for impeaching not only the Department of Planning and Zoning, but also the law department? If so, can those agencies be rehabilitated? Ogden Torque Tire Paralysis Plant, Avenue Woods, Evamar decisions offer no rehabilitation. The consequences for the county are severe. In any judicial proceeding, the credibility of any witness from either of those agencies could be impeached by any party to the proceeding, leaving the county without a voice. And indeed, that could be the case in proceedings in these chambers. The presiding judge did dismiss the case. Finding the letter from the Department of Planning and Zoning was not an answer. He did not rule on the merits. Nevertheless, the issue was resolved, and the case moved. The airport is a conforming use by special exception. It is therefore operating as a permitted use. Good night.
Good night.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right, with no more speakers, we'll move to Agenda Number 16, business from council members. Ms. Hobbs?
Good evening. I'd like to express my concern over the unfinished community center at the halted continuing care retirement community project at Evamar located in District E. Over the past week, I've expressed my concerns to the administration and the contract purchaser of Evamar, and I have asked that steps be taken to remove the half-constructed building as it's been untouched for over a year. I share the concerns. I have heard from many of my constituents. It's not only an eyesore, but poses a safety hazard, and I will continue to seek a resolution and keep you apprised of the developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
I had the privilege of going to the Econo-Wingo Truck Wait and Inspection Station in Darlington that's now open, so that our safety on our roads up north might be a little more paid attention to. Also, last night, along with the council president, we went to the Agricultural Education Foundation. We're trying to advocate education and agriculture. I had the privilege of going to the Iron Birds Game with some delegates and senators from the General Assembly, talking about some Harford County interest. And then, lastly, I was selected by the Comptroller Learman to represent Harford County in the Local Governance Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Januar Danan?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Ruth Hagee for becoming the new member of the Sentry Club. Mrs. Hagee will be turning 101 on October 24th, so congratulations and happy birthday. Last night, I attended the Army Alliance Dinner at the meeting. Outgoing President Tony Lazuzu gave an impromptu slideshow of when he went to New York right after 9/11. His group was one of very few that were able to fly, and the reason they were flying to New York was they had some specialized equipment that could go and detect people with, I guess, cell signals and everything. So they were able to uncover over 200 people out of the rubble down there. One of the biggest things was there was a fire truck that they showed a picture of that was buried in 40 feet of rubble. They were able to clear that off, and they found five firefighters alive in there. So very emotional. I had some family that perished during 9/11, so, you know, I think nobody can forget, and if you see something, you still need to say something, as they say. So today, I attended the Vulcan Tour in Habit of Grace. And then, finally, I'd like to remind everybody that the first-ever Maryland Italian Festival will be held September 29th, October 1st, at the Equestrian Center. And SIAV is looking for volunteers, so if you want, you can get on to thesiav.org and look for the volunteer. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Januar Danan. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge National Recovery Month. I know in the past, the county has acknowledged and supported Recovery Month, which I think is important for outreach and awareness. On that note, I know that Harford County was allotted a certain amount of opioid settlement funds for the government, and I look forward to learning more about how that money is being spent. Just to follow up to the Fallston Development Proposal of Apartments Work Group, I thought we had a productive meeting. It's put a statement out online. Based off that meeting, in good faith, the developer has postponed his DAC hearing for October 18th, I believe. So we're going to have a follow-up meeting on that to discover different alternatives for development on that project. I would also like to discuss the county administration's recent redirection of the currently approved Harford County Sheriff's Office Central Precinct and Training Center and the independent study of the outside firm from Mann's Woodward Studios. As many of you know, I and the entire council have been advocating for the constituent, I mean, for the continuation of the funded project for nearly 10 months. Having reviewed some of the documentation, I believe there is inconsistencies in the Mann's review and the decision to push for a more expensive precinct and training center rather than the previously approved renovation of the heat center. My hope is to get clarification soon on several of those concerns, some of which the Mann's report states their review was not comprehensive and was more of a cursory review. This contrasts with the nearly 15 months of the heat center design team committed to complete and in-depth comprehensive design analysis that taxpayers paid over $1 million for. I have requested an audit of what Mann's cursory review cost, but was informed the budget doesn't have any documentation on the non-comprehensive study. In the county's press release, it was mentioned the heat center was grossly underestimated. However, Mann's report indicated that the cost could exceed $29 million and may be closer to $33 million. The original heat center estimates from July 1st of 2022 projected the cost range between $28 and $30 million. Now, over a year later, after the project has been halted, I'm sure inflation has affected that cost nearly 7% to 10%. Although the county administration recommends a comprehensive public safety complex for a joint training in indoor range at a different location, the concern I have with that is that joint training occurs in the field, such as schools, independent buildings, and communities to capture the real-life scenarios, not in a precinct. Secondly, the sheriff's office has no need for an indoor range. They have a great shooting complex in the county that serves them well. And one of the important points of this proposed public safety complex would exceed over $150 million. So the county administration's vision is $33 million is too much, but $150 million plus at a location to be determined later is okay. I just don't understand that logic. Larry, if you could, please just convey a request. I would like to know what documentation was sent to Mann's for that cursory evaluation and how much it costs, please. I would make one final point on this subject. The county administration has come back before the council, would have to come back before the council, to terminate that capital project that was passed and supported unanimously by a resolution. My hope is that everyone on the council sees that this doesn't make sense and votes no if that request does return to the council. This brings me to my next point. I am a firm believer that fiscal responsibility is not how you spend, not, excuse me, not what you spend, but how you spend. Recently, the county administration announced the funding for four new sheriff's office positions to support Aberdeen School Resource Officers, which will allow Aberdeen officers to return to patrol. On the surface, I thank the county executive for supporting Aberdeen Public Safety in a time of need when they are struggling with recruitment. However, I am concerned in the manner in which it was done. In other similar circumstances, an MOU is completed, and a self-sustained, independent, tax-based government would reimburse the supporting agency or government. Therefore, Aberdeen should reimburse Harford County for police services. The cost of four initial deputies is over $800,000. These are tax dollars that could be returned to Harford County District's initiatives or pay the raises for the Harford County employees, which we're waiting for, for the second installment of 1.5%. The next question is, is Habit of Grace and Bel Air going to seek the same support, which would add to the enormous cost? At a time when the administration had declared a structural deficit, they seem to be consistently overspending on building, properties, and services. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the reasons we jumped to 17 and then come back to the council members is that we have the citizens speak first, and then we can pick things out of what the people might say, and we should be answering them. That's what I think. That's why it's went in that area. A couple I wanted to talk about that, when we talked about impact fees. Impact fees passed in 2004. I was on the council then, and I voted against it. And one of the reasons I said, look, and they said, well, they put a sunset clause on it. I believe, I can't remember what it's, the sunset clause, I think it was a 10-year sunset clause, if I'm not mistaken. And I said, look, here's a problem when you add another fee. Okay? When you add another fee, it never goes away. I don't care how many sunset clauses you put on it, because when the sunset clause time comes, the problem is, that's paid for something over that 10-year period. And now, you can say, well, if you, let's say, let's say some of that money went into schools for whatever. Then you say, well, now it's sunset, so we're going to drop the fee. And you say, oh, you're against schools, or you're against whatever that fee pays for. So that's a problem when you have, when you put a new fee on. And now, that's been, now that's been 19 years, hard to believe, but it's been 19 years, and that fee is still there, and we're still talking about it. Also, this building and construction stuff you're talking about, I agree with you 100%. I have a bill I'm putting together, and I hope I have the, the council supports it, and that's to put the 20-acre requirement back into the law that the previous administration in 2017 took out. There used to be a 20-acre requirement in the law to say, if you're going to build a construction site, you're going to build, say, on 100 acres, you can only build 20 acres at a time. That cuts down on the rent runoff and the cutting down of all the trees and destroying our neighborhoods. Well, they took it out. In 2017, you can look it up on the bill, December of 2017, that was very quietly a one-line item taken out of the law. And this is probably, you've got to watch these bills, and you've got to watch every word. I'm a language guy, you know? I've dealt a lot of that in my past jobs, drafting collective bargaining agreements. I know a lot about language, and you've got to be very careful. You've got to watch all this language in these bills. I mean every word. You can change shower well, you know, to shower well. And then, there have been court cases all over the United States about those two words. So my bill will restore the 20-acre requirement, and we wouldn't have what we have right now. We have this abortion going on on 152 right now, and Route 40. They, what they do, since they took that 20, they could clear that entire land. I don't know how many acres it is, but it's probably a couple hundred acres, whereas they could only do 20 acres at a time. The runoff from there has been absolutely terrible. Every time it rains, you know, I live, I live in Joppa Town, I live on the water, and every time you get a good rain, that entire basin in there, and a tire gunpowder river turns into a cup of coffee with a lot of cream. And it's unbelievable. You can see some photos that they, that people have presented to us, where you could see this brown literally coming down the river. You could take one photo, it's here, next photo, it's here, next photo, it's completely covered, the entire Ramsey Island, Joppa Town basin. And that's a lot of water to be able to change the color, you know, with this mud. And what happens, that mud settles sooner or later. Guess what? Got to dredge it, okay? Now, they've been fined $60,000, and there are all kinds of things going on, and there's a possibility they're going to be shut down. I hope, I hope the county executive shuts them down until they can apply, they can reapply for all the requirements they're supposed to under the law, that they keep violating the law, skirting the law every single day they're there. So we want to, I would like to return this 20-acre requirement, so this never happens to anybody again. I hope I have the support of the county councilman. I attended the, the Southern, county executive had his Southern County Task Force meeting at the Edgewood Community Center on September 7th, and had a very good crowd. It was, it was overflow crowd there. County executive had all his heads of all his departments there, and he gave a very nice speech, and he had an overhead that he put on for about 40 minutes. And after, after he was done talking, he allowed all the people there, whoever wanted to come up, they had a microphone, and I'll tell you, at least 30 or 40 people came up and spoke, and they kept them to three minutes like here, but, you know, like here, they don't always stay to three minutes. But I'm sure the people were very happy about the attention that we're... But I'm sure the people were very happy about the attention that we're trying to give the Southern part of county that has been, that kind of attention that's been missing for a great many years. I also attended the Army Alliance Dinner with, with Tony and the county executive over at Waters Edge, and they had some, a lot of that was focused on 9/11 and some of the pictures and all that, pretty graphic. And, and I don't know if anybody's been working, watching History Channel in the last week, but they had all this stuff on the History Channel, and a lot of this stuff, information now has been released from the FBI and all, that they, they didn't release when it first happened. If you watch that, you'll see how screwed up a lot of, how screwed up our country was there. We were really vulnerable. It was unbelievable. You need, you need to watch that. Also, the copper mine is building the eight sport fields in Edgewood. It's come along very well. We expect them to open this spring. Should be a big event. Interested, see how it's going to work out. Tomorrow, I'm going to meet with the governor over at the Maryland Public Television. They're doing a, opening up to the public, where you have to have invitation to talk about schools and about funding for schools. So, it's going to be very interesting. And it's at Maryland Public Television where my son works, so I get to see my son over there. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. First of all, Ms. Sadowski, are you still with us? Yes. So, the first thing I did after the meeting was over last week is I reached out to Tim Van den, and he and I had a conversation. It's not the first time that we kind of had a back and forth. So, the last thing I ever want to do is to get into position to where we may have to ask somebody to leave. This is your chambers. But when he stood up there and he said rumors and innuendos, I had no idea what he was talking about, no idea of what's taking place in the last 36 hours, 48 hours. So, he and I discussed that, and we're fine. He'll be back when he gets back from travel. So, I wanted to discuss that. And then, this past Friday, we did meet with the school board president, Mr. Pointon, vice president, Ms. Han, the superintendent of schools, Mr. Brown, and the county executive, myself, Shane Grimm from Planning and Zoning, and we talked about all sorts of things, the adequate public facilities numbers, the possible land banking for future schools, impact fees. We talked about the possibility of me. We have our adequate public facilities meetings twice a year, according to the Harford County Zoning Code, December and June, and we advertise for those four or five weeks at least ahead of time. The public is always welcome. It's open to the public. Once in a while, we get participation from the paper, but very often, very seldom do we ever have any public there. But it is open to the public, and will continue to be. We talked with the county attorney, their council attorney today. We may extend and have more meetings coming forward, but we have to figure out a schedule so that we can advertise them and still continue with the two that we need to have within the code. And then, yesterday, I attended the 9/11 memorial service at the EOC with Councilman Jan Jourdan and county executive and, and many, many other folks there. And, you know, it's, it's something that we will never forget. It's something that all of us remember where we were when it happened, and we have to continue to remember those folks and those times. So, also, want to give a quick update. Last meeting, we had some comments from a couple citizens, Mr. Asp and Mr. Chandler, in reference to EMS response times. Immediately the next morning, we started digging into that. We have the records, and I think that Mr. Richardson, if you want to get more of an update, will, is prepared to present that information tonight if anyone's interested. And I do have a copy for myself as well. And I think that pretty much covers everything tonight. But again, I want to stress, this is your chamber. We're here to listen to you. That's what this chamber is for, and it will always be that way. And I look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you. Just adjourn the meeting now. Thank you.